Bill ready? Good afternoon, I am now going to call the July seventeenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order on Wednesday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three. Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, an act making appropriations for our fiscal year twenty twenty three, which includes a two-year extension of the option for holding for public parties to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the Mass Open Meeting Law, Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty, A, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty first, twenty twenty five. We are live today and remote. Please join me in saluting the flag. Pledge allegiance. Thank you. We'll call a roll. Commissioner Stady.
I'm present via Zoom.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is here. We have a quorum.
I'd like to say this at the beginning, because we're remote, you have my permission to use my stamp also on the warrants for the school.
And I agree with Peter's statement. You have my permission as well.
Okay, and we do have a school warrant here, so we'll dispatch of that. No executive session today. Number four, minutes of the open session meeting of July tenth for approval.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded in the minutes of July tenth. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Minutes of the open session meeting on July second for approval.
Yep, they're fine. I move approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded all in favor. Aye, it is a vote. Number five, we have no appointments. Number six, public comment. Each week at our regular meeting, we have a session for public comment. Now is the time, if there's anyone out in Zoom land that was interested in making a public comment, or they can appear in person and comment on any subject they would like. This is the time, if anyone is out there that would like to public comment. Director Cronin, have you received any comment, any requests?
No, sir.
Okay. Again, last call for public comment. No public comment today. Thank you. All business, we have none. Personnel matters for consideration. We have several today. Agricultural School Golf Course and Registry Dean and one in maintenance. Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to meet these. I have a question on the first one through you, perhaps to Mr. Wallace who's here. I thought Tracy Ward had tendered her resignation and was leaving us. I don't understand why we're putting an address change in essentially a Morris Town, Tennessee. So why, she's moving, she's leaving. Why do we have to put that in?
I'm not sure about the order of that. First of all, your understanding is correct that she is, she is leaving the school.
Right. So why are we, why are we bothering the address change? Is that for people?
We're going to have Michelle.
Maybe salary or something?
Michelle Labardini is here. We're going to ask Michelle to shed some light on Tracy Ward.
Yeah, for, at the end of the year, we have to send out tax forms to her, so we need her updated address.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, that just didn't seem weird that she's, she's gone. Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move the following for approval. Then notice of address change for Tracy of Morris Town, Tennessee now as a former, really administrative assistant at the salary stated effective seven twelve twenty four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded all in favor. Aye, it is a vote.
Sadly, we're losing our track. Move, move approval. Notice of resignation of Chris O'Donnell of North Situate as the Phys Ed Health Instructor and Part-Time A.D. as effective eight twenty-three twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
I move approval. Notice contingent appointment for Emily Smith of Quincy as a student worker for the rate stated effective date seven eighteen twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
And lastly, I approve approval of the notice of appointment for Kimberly Brenton of Medfield, Mass. as a special ed paraprofessional, the rate stated effective date eight twenty-six twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Next, President.
Of course, we have two. Dana Smith is moving. He's leaving Canton. I move approval of the notice of address change for Dana as the Assistant Director Golf Pro at the rate stated effective date seven one twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
Move approval and notice of job title change for Lily Chansania, Chansania. Hopeless right. Randolph, Mass. is a seasoned golf course associate, rate stated effective date seven seventeen twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Next one is Registry Dean's.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Move notice of resignation of Margaret Comer of Holbrook as Head Clerk at the Registry at the rate stated effective date of the resignation, seven twenty-five twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
And in maintenance, move notice of appointment of Margaret Comer of Holbrook as Assistant Supervisor of Operations at the rate stated effective date seven twenty-six twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Payroll expense warrants.
Right, I have that. If you want me to read it, I could do it, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Move the approval for the warrant list of seven seventeen twenty-four. First one, twenty-five dash two, the payroll for the county. I move the amount of one hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-one dollars, sixty cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Second one, I move the expense of the county, and it's a oh-seven dash oh-three twenty-five. I move the sum three hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars, ninety cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Third, I have a warrant list item twenty-five dash three, Opera Westwood. I move approval of the sum of two hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
Mr. Chairman, on the next one, I wanted to talk to the board about it. I read the information. I'm a little troubled on this. I want to hold this off, if we could, for a week, where I can get some additional information. So I thought, if someone wants to move it, they can, but I have trouble with approving a million dollars for that particular item at this time.
I, I don't have access to that. So what do we have on that, John?
Fred, I'm not, I don't have the, Commissioner Stady, could you offer more detail on which item you're talking about?
So the Brookline, it's the Brookline Opera Ward. It doesn't do, it doesn't address water or sewer, it doesn't address vaccines, it doesn't address anything. It's to go to a nonprofit subset category in which basically this group, that is some indirectly way related to Brookline, does address inequities in terms of housing and jobs and sort of, and things of that. I just, I don't know enough about the organization. It just seemed that, you know, I would love someone from Brookline, truthfully, for an amount that large for a nonprofit. That's a very significant amount. I mean, we already said no to United Way for two hundred thousand, and this organization that I know nothing about, and they're probably a good organization. They may be, but they're asking for over a million dollars, and it's, like I said, I didn't, I didn't see it fitting per se in the opera categories when I read it, and I read that thing over and over again. I know it says they addressed inequities and, and things of that sort, but I just wanted a little more detail. I wanted to see where it all came from. They said it wasn't part of the town of Brookline. My understanding was it's a subset or a sub grant that they kind of then give to other organizations, and I just, I felt a little troubled by it.
Okay.
Agreed, Mr. Chairman.
Director Cronin, shed a little light on this for us.
I could, yes. Commissioner Stady, this particular item is approved under the economic impact category of the American Rescue Plan Act. The request is a reimbursement for funds against the safety net distribution of funds through the Brookline Grants for Racial Equity and Transformation Program. So it does fit under opera. It is an approved and eligible expense. Our auditors, both levels, have approved this. This is in concert with how Brookline has been managing their overall grant program. I think I mentioned before that one of the challenges that Brookline faced initially was their choice through their select board to solicit over thirty-two million dollars worth of ideas of how to use these funds to the benefit of all citizens in, in Brookline. They've done a very comprehensive job reaching all four corners of their community. It's an expansive use of federal dollars. It may be one of the reasons why Brookline is more late to this process than others, but in this case, they have already distributed, distributed funds through this network against the items that you just previously spoke about, Commissioner Stady, and this is strictly a reimbursement under an eligible category. If you would like Brookline to come in and explain further what they're doing with these funds before you approve it, that's certainly a prerogative, but I want to let you know from an auditing, financial, and grant eligibility perspective, it is eligible, it is allowable, but the next step of approval is certainly up to you and Commissioners Shea and Collins.
John, is there any, is there any problem with, with the delay of a week?
Yeah.
I would say no, Peter. It's a reimbursement expense. It's not as though they're positioning to use these funds for an upcoming deadline, and certainly, like I said, if you want to speak to them and have some questions about it, we can have them in to do that before you take a vote.
I, I would. I'd feel a little better. We've heard very, very little from Brookline, and I know you're working, and Billy and the team are working very hard with that town to get money for opera. I appreciate that, but this is a huge amount of money, and when I read it, I, I didn't get the understanding that you just gave me, which is good. That gives me a comfort level, but I would like to respectfully ask, we have somebody come in even via Zoom next week? Just say hello and talk to us about this. This is a good thing. It'd be nice to know where that money went and how it did help out the town, and that's just, I mean, you get privy to that. I don't. And as Commissioner, we need, we need to hear some of those things, and our public does as well, even via the Zoom. So I, I'd like to wait and see. It sounds like it's okay if our auditors say it's okay, and you know, our CPA say it's all right. That's fine. I can't go against them, but I'm just more troubled by this type of a size of a grant, and again, having, you know, nothing in, like, in person from Brookline. I'd like to have somebody come in next week, either in Zoom or in person. That'd be great.
I think it's in order. I mean, a week isn't going to make a change, but if it'll, if it'll shed more light on it, that's important.
It might even help them. It would help us, even in terms of explaining what we're doing with the funds, because that's, it's a pretty broad category. I didn't understand that they were seeking reimbursement, so it's already been spent.
Okay, I'll take a motion. A week or two, whatever, whatever you'd like, Commissioner.
I just, just a week. I say, I move that we table warrant twenty-five dash three, Opera Brookline, but that's sum of money just for one week to allow Brookline to send a official or have a official attend our meeting next week as part of our agenda and talk it over. That's all.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Motion's made and seconded to ask to hold the Opera Award to the town of Brookline for a week until we can get a little more explanation about it. Motion is to hold one million, two hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars under the Opera warrant. All in favor of postponing this three a week? Aye, that is unanimous. Postpone will be on next week's agenda, pending talking to town.
Right, thank you.
What about the second one to Westwood? Did we do that already?
We did. That was done, Mr. Chairman.
Westwood is fine.
Right, that concludes our warrant list.
Two hundred seventy-two thousand to the town of Westwood. Okay. That concludes payroll expense warrants. Number ten, Report of American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. It might be superfluous, but Director Cronin?
Just briefly, for the Commissioner's benefit, I assessed the position of the grants overall this past week. You just awarded Westwood the two-hundred-and-first award under this program since it began. You are over a hundred and twenty-one million dollars in funds distributed. Out of the hundred and twenty-one million, about five, just under five million, has been returned by the communities for reuse within their allotments, so some of them are reconsidering how to use those funds. We're in great position. I just approved four more closeout plans this week. We're up to sixteen of the twenty-eight communities with an approved closeout plan with three more that I'll be reviewing on Friday. So overall, we're in a great position as we head into the final six months of this grant. Later today, Mr. Buckley and I will be attending a Norfolk County Managers' Meeting, and I'll be updating the managers on the position of the grant, too. I'm sure many of them will be asking for any excess funds or surplus funds for their various communities, and I will inform them, as I have you, that at this time, we don't envision any substantial reversion to be eligible for redistribution. That could change later in the year as communities may encounter some problems obligating funds, but at this time, things are going according to plan, Mr. Chairman, and I'm happy to report the county, I believe, exceeds the benchmarks that the other counties are up against at this time, given the timeline. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of John relative to American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one?
Well, great job, John. Thank you.
Number eleven, Opera Warrants Approval. I think we talked, we're going to hold one, and we, yeah, the two hundred seventy-two thousand is down, and Westwood went through, so.
Right.
Wait for next week to finish up with Brookline, so that's good. Number thirteen, Contract Awards. Nancy, please. Commissioners, there are two. Nancy, good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good. Number one, Animal Feeds for Norfolk County Agricultural School.
Yes, I received quotes from three vendors for the feeds for the animals at the Agricultural High School, and it's recommended from the farm manager to award a contract to Sweet Metal Feed and Ventura Grain for a period of one year.
Okay, so you received three on the first one, right?
We, yeah, we received three quotes for the animal feeds, and it's recommended from the farm manager to award a contract to Sweet Metal Feed and Ventura Grain, who are also the lowest vendors.
So we're going to do this?
I move approval of the recommendation of the farm manager.
So we're going to do it all smooth today?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's fine. Are these, these known to us?
Yes, they're both.
Past vendors?
Past vendors, yes.
Okay. On the first, on Animal Feeds in Norfolk County Agricultural School, motion made and seconded to award a two. Name again, I'm sorry.
Sweet Metal Feed and Ventura Grain.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yep. All in favor? Aye, it's three. It's sweet, for Sweet Metal Feed and Ventura Grain. We got to keep our animals fed. Thank you. Second item on the purchasing agenda today is vote for change to fiscal twenty-four reserve list total. Why do I have that? That's, why is that under contract awards? Is that the place to put it?
The, several of these operating reserves are associated with contracts and obligations that are being continued into FY twenty-five.
Okay.
There were just some more changes to some of the amounts that were reserved, were reserved, and this is, will be the final vote for this year's reserve list.
Okay, every year we do this?
Every year, yes.
And it's in your packet?
Yeah, I thought, yes, you mentioned that last week to me, didn't you? You said there'd be ones.
Yeah, there were additional changes that needed to be made. So the new total amount.
Right, five eighty-three.
Six oh nine fourteen, yes.
Got it. Okay, I'll move that, Mr. Chairman. I'll move the approval of the final number for the total reserve as five hundred eighty-three thousand, six hundred nine dollars, fourteen cents. So moved.
Second.
And that's the operating reserve.
Operating reserve for fiscal year twenty-four. We do this every year at the end of the year. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? It is a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy.
Moving right along.
Okay.
Number fourteen, Fiscal Year Norfolk County Assessment for approval. In your packet is a list of the fiscal twenty-five assessments to our twenty-eight member cities and towns. Any questions, any comments, Commissioners? Director Cronin has a comment. Go ahead.
To the Commissioner's attention, I just wanted to alert you that this is our annual invoice, if you will, levy to the various cities and towns pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-five, Section Thirty. This breakout is the annual assessment per community that will be paid to, to the county on two occasions this coming fiscal year. This total amount of seven million, three hundred four thousand, two hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents is the number that was built into our FY twenty-five revenue, and it is consistent with a two-and-a-half percent increase from the prior year. For your consideration, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we also do this once a year in, in June, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Quick question for you, Mr. Chairman, to John. Is that, if that's an annual two-and-a-half percent increase by law, that's the most we can assess, correct?
Correct.
Okay, how does that, so obviously this number is higher than last year's, right? By two-and-a-half percent?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm saying that the towns expect that, because they know that's the limit, so town budget-wise, they would expect that two-and-a-half percent, you know, from us as a, not a surprise.
Correct.
Okay. I move approval of the amount of the levy, seven million, three hundred four thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, twenty-five cents for the upcoming fiscal year, correct?
Correct.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Thank you. Bit openings are done, contract awards are done. Number fourteen, done. Norfolk County Assessment. Number fifteen, consideration of secession of the spending and hiring freeze for fiscal year twenty-five. Secession. John Cronin.
Thank you, Commissioner Shea. Back in December of twenty twenty-four, the Commissioners voted a FY twenty-four spending and hiring freeze until such time as our revenue picture improved. I'm happy to report that as a result of these actions that were taken, the county preserved enough of its FY twenty-four operating budget and restrained itself from non-backfill new hires and created a surplus into FY twenty-five. The Treasurer's Office is in the process of putting the final touches on what that number is, but in a conversation earlier this week with Joe Doria, we've confirmed that the surplus is expected to be approximately a half a million dollars. The details and information on exactly what that number is will follow, and will be ready for our September Advisory Board hearing. So with your approval, I would recommend the removal of the spending and hiring freeze that was put in place. Be mindful that throughout FY twenty-five, we will continue to monitor revenue and to evaluate how it is measuring up against our projected benchmarks as approved by the Advisory Board in May.
Okay.
Commissioners, any comments or questions?
No, I'll endorse the Director Cronin's idea, and I would move that we therefore suspend the spending and hiring freeze for fiscal twenty-five and let's go back to normal as of next week, this date. What date do you want, John?
Effective today.
As of today, okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to cease the spending and hiring freeze that was put in place. What month?
December of twenty twenty-three.
In December of twenty twenty-three? And business is normal starting today. All in favor? Number sixteen, Request for the Civic Rate of the, at the President's Golf Course for the Maccay Sushi Scholarship Fund. Last week, we briefly talked about these and this one. This is dated June twenty-fifth. This is a, a long time. I don't think it's twenty-five years old, but it's, it's more than fifteen, and this is in memory of Maccay Sushi. It's called the Sushi Cup to benefit Milton High School scholarships and community grants. We appreciate all the work the county has done, and Dana Smith, the amazing job he does in running our tournament. So they're writing again, asking for it, and we're ready to go, I believe. Oh, it's the thirty, move thirty-second year. Time does go by, and it's signed by Thomas McKinnon, Francis McKinnon, and Frank Suce of Milton. Again, this is in memory of Macc Suce, who lost his life thirty-two years ago in an automobile accident.
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I'll second, no problem. That's fine.
Motion made and seconded to give the Civic Rate to Maccay Sushi Scholarship Fund. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you very much. Moving right along. Report of the County Director.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I have two items. I believe it was back in May or June, the Commissioners asked that the Norfolk County Sheriff and Probation Office be alerted of the potential opportunity for ARPA funds. We have received previously a visit from the sheriff expressing his interest in a program, which I believe he's discussed with you publicly, and we wanted to expand the opportunity to probation as well. This past week, or the last two weeks, I should say, we have received a modified request from each elected totaling up to one hundred thousand dollars, the details of which will be forthcoming to you in an upcoming packet for consideration of ARPA funding. We are evaluating the requests at this time to make sure they're consistent with eligibility, and at that time, when it is concluded they are, we'll bring them before you for consideration. But both, I wanted to alert you, followed up as requested and gave us grant applications in the scale that you had requested as well. So more on that shortly. As I mentioned, Mr. Buckley and I will be heading to the monthly Norfolk County Managers' Meeting to be held in Randolph this afternoon. Norfolk County is hosting. We'll be covering a number of different items relevant to the community's interests, but I want to alert the Commissioners that we're taking this opportunity as the host to push your, one of our top priorities, which is the expansion and use of regional services for the benefit of our communities. In addition to hearing from me on ARPA updates and ARPA information, which I know they came to be interested in, you will also have Mr. Buckley, Mr. Mullin, and Mr. Patrick Higgins discussing the successful rollout of the Ways and Measures Program, as well as our engineering program and, and its use across the county. One of the things that we're also going to make note of is that we are open for regional service ideas. Mr. Buckley will be discussing with the managers any interest they may have in advancing needs for regional services and the tests that we will put those ideas through over the coming months and years. It's important dialogue that I think is beneficial, and I also believe, going back to remarks that were made some time ago, these relationships and plans and thoughts are, I think, in large part due to the successful ARPA program, which the Commissioners have run over the last two-and-a-half years and have gained a lot of trust and familiarity with the various managers across the county. They now want to work with us more regularly, and they see a path towards using our, our governmental tools to their benefit through regional work. So we'll learn more and talk more today and report back on any new ideas, but I'm looking forward to meeting these folks. It should be a very fruitful discussion. That'll be this afternoon. That is all I have regarding updates. I do have one item. Mr. Chairman, through you and for the benefit of the other Commissioners, we had a late contract bid that came in after the posting. The posting, as you probably understand, came in early afternoon, but because we have an unusual early morning meeting today, it did not meet the timeline, but we urgently would ask for your indulgence to approve a contract for procurement services. As you know, Nancy, Rockwell is retiring a week from Friday. We had put out to bid service requests for contractual services for procurement. We received a bid and would like to see if you consider approving it today under number sixteen, excuse, under eighteen on your agenda. Emergency items that the Chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. We have a packet available, and the Commissioner's looking at it, including the rates associated with these services. It is our hope that prior to Nancy leaving, we can have the service on board for transitional opportunities, so Nancy can work with this individual to successfully ensure that we don't miss a beat regarding our contracts and procurement. For your consideration, under number eighteen.
And this package, it's in your packet, Commissioners, under registration information?
Not sure it was in their packet, so we have it available. Either of you want to look at it, I have packet here. If you have any questions. Not sure it was in their packet, um, so we have it available, if, um, either of you want to look at it, I have packet here, if you have any questions.
I think, uh, I'll, I'll defer to the board, that I have no problem if you want to move on it today with us. This is an unusual meeting, you know, having the fact it was in the morning, and, and I know that it'd be great if we could get this done so that the person could get on board and get a little training with Nancy, so, uh, to accommodate John and accommodate us, I, I would, I would move, whatever, you know, is necessary to move forward.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's Capital Strategies, um, they have been involved with us before.
They are the backup to the backup, we currently contract with them for, uh, approving second level grant applications for ARPA, where Powers and Sullivan have conflicts, so we do have a relationship with them already.
Okay, and it's Jennifer Thompson, who we've met through our.
She's the head, um, lead at, uh, Capital Strategies.
Okay. I, I think we're ready to go, and, uh, it's a very temporary, but we still haven't landed on a.
No, the process is still ongoing.
A success at a, uh, Nancy, after nationwide search, but, you know, we want to get this right, and the certain criteria require that they be stay trained, et cetera, et cetera, which Nancy always has been, so, and these people can fill the bill up until, is there a ceiling on this? Either time or money?
Uh, when this, when the need is no longer required.
Okay. Okay, I, I don't have an objection either, I don't want to hold anything up particularly, uh, um, filling in, uh, temporary filling in when Nancy leaves us in a week or so, so there'll be no blowout, and, uh, this is a busy time.
So that would come up under number eighteen, I'm done with my Director's Report, but I want to alert you that I'd request that action under number eighteen.
Yeah, let's do it there.
Okay, let me read, read the title of this, this is a proposal for Norfolk County Professional Services for Procurement and Temporary Management. Capital Strategy Solutions pleased to present a proposal to provide professional consulting services to the county in Norfolk. The letter and enclosed proposal describe our company qualifications, approach, and commitment in Norfolk County can expect from Capital Strategies. I, Jennifer Thompson, am, am authorized to make commitments, including financial ones on behalf of Capital Solutions LLC for aspects of the project. We appreciate the opportunity to bid on these services. Sincerely, Jennifer Thompson, Chief Development Officer, Capital Strategies.
I want to note, Commissioner, uh, Shay, that this item was publicly bid, they were the only bidder.
They were the only bidder, uh, Nancy's here, and, uh, page two lists a hundred cities and towns in the Commonwealth that they're presently, uh, supplying some client services to. Just, I mean, I don't want to go over all of them, but many cities, many towns. Uh, from various corners of, including, or five from the, from, including Plainville, Dover, Weymouth. Plainville, Dover, Weymouth, where else here, was? County in Norfolk, town of Medfield, town of Randolph. They give their references, and they give the details of the project, so I think everything is here in order, and in order to, uh, be prepared for Nancy's retirement. To Florida, we ought to have this done today, if not, we can.
Congratulations.
We have more to say next week about Nancy.
Wow, give away her secrets, all right. Um, I have a couple of questions before we act on it, so, Mr. Chairman, for you, uh, Capital Strategies is the group we're going to be awarded to, right?
Yes.
All right, what's the period of time, is it one year, or is it a?
Go ahead, Nancy.
Four, four to eight weeks with a potential extension.
Okay, all right, and the rate stated, um, the Capital Strategy, you mentioned a couple of towns. Did, uh, the director check touch base with, like, Weymouth or Randolph for anybody, or did you feel countable from prior work?
Uh, prior work.
Okay, okay, that's fine. All right. I got no problem.
I think we recently saw Jennifer when we did the Dover. I mean, the Franklin Award, we did a Dover Award too, but.
Yep.
And, uh, she did, she handled that for the town of Franklin, that was only a couple of weeks ago, most recent, but I do remember her.
Yeah.
Coming before us.
Okay. So would the motion be in order to, uh, award this, uh, particular, uh, uh, job or project to Capital Strategies for a period of four to eight weeks with the option to extension at the rate stated? How's that, effective this date?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to award a temporary contract for procurement on, upon the retirement of Nancy Rockwell, all in favor?
Aye.
Three to zero. But we're still actively soliciting a permanent person.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. It's like a stopgap, right, a little stopgap measure.
Right.
As long as it's checked.
I have one more item on the, uh, last, it's not really.
Items, go ahead, Commission.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think it'd be kind of just, I'm, I'm saying it to bring attention to it, and I know, uh, John will hear me and take the appropriate action. Um, I may have mentioned this, maybe I didn't, but the sign that we have, that's, I guess, we need a registry of deeds. Um, it was reported by a beloved treasurer, you can't see his name, it's, you really can't see Bellotti's name on there, it's, it's worn out. And now it's starting to wear out, I hate to say it on my name and yours as well, it probably needs a little facelift, so maybe you can direct John McGowan to look into it and take the appropriate.
Absolutely, you mean the sign that's on the side near the O'Brien?
Yes, right near, yes. You can't, I noticed it myself a couple of weeks ago when I was coming out, and Mike had said, yes, what are you gonna do about it? I said, all right, he was, you know, he's very, being good natured about it, but it's worn out, basically it's worn out, it needs kind of a, a little upkeep. Just bring it to the attention of John McGowan, through you and through John, it needs a kind of a little facelift.
Fine, I know right where it is, I go by it every day, okay.
Take a look.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's all. Other than that?
Little touch up.
Yeah, a little touch up. Good luck at your meeting.
Okay, last call, anything else, um, that we need to address today, we're gonna have a full meeting tomorrow. Both, uh, Director Cronin and Assistant?
Next week.
Next week, not tomorrow, next week, I'm sorry.
It's okay, got me worried.
June, July twenty-fourth.
It's like, yeah, wait a minute. I, I would move if there's nothing else that we adjourn at, uh, ten forty-eight, Mr. Chairman?
That's good. Motion made, seconded?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Yeah, aye, you are adjourned at ten forty-eight.
Stay cool.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Stamping people.